Ready to go?
Do the great fine.
Hi, good evening and welcome to the City of Sunbury Council meeting. It is February twenty first, two thousand and twenty four at seven thirty P M. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor St. John?
Here.
Mister Cavill?
Here.
Mister Neff?
Here.
Mister Grumney?
Here.
Mister Martin?
Here.
Miss Cooper?
Here.
Sixth president and Molly Drayer is the option.
City Council held a meeting on February seventh, two thousand and twenty four. We're looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
Salute.
Motion by Councilwoman Cooper, second by Councilman Neff. Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Neff?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mister Cavill?
Yes.
Six yeas?
All right, we do have two scheduled visitors this evening and then we'll open it up to the public. First, we have Maria Schaefer. I believe you're here from Morpsy and you're going to cover the Metropolitan Transportation Plan Update. Welcome.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me tonight.
Good evening.
I'm here to talk about the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and tell you all about that. Hopefully some visual aids.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. And so, good evening again. I'm Maria Schaefer and the Associate Director of Transportation Planning at the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, also known as Morpsy. Okay, good.
Is it working for you? Can I have you turn it on?
No, okay. Yeah, it looks like this is probably the PDF, so you might have to do, well, I'll see if it can.
I can scroll for you.
Okay. So, if you're not familiar with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, we are the regional council for the Central Ohio region. We are a region of two point four million and growing. And we serve over eighty-five local governments, including the City of Sunbury. We do, we focus on transportation infrastructure. We recently have an Economic Development District designation. We do planning and sustainability, data mapping. We have residential services component and we do policy and grant development and just general engagement. We, you know, we really bring together local governments in Central Ohio for collaboration and really to drive investment in our region. So what I'm here to talk to you tonight about, we have a fifteen county area of interest. What I'm focusing on tonight is our metropolitan, what we call the Metropolitan Planning Organization area, which that is our, the counties of Franklin and Delaware, parts of Union, Licking and Fairfield. And as the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Central Ohio region, we are stewards of federal transportation dollars that come to our region. And so, if we can go to the next slide, a key part of that function is developing the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And why is that important? As I'm sure you are, you are reading and experiencing daily the growth that is projected for Central Ohio. We are expected to be a region of nearly three point one five million by the year twenty fifty. If you want to go to the next slide, you'll see that translates into over about seven hundred and twenty-six thousand more people in our region and almost three hundred and sixty thousand more jobs in our region. So as you can imagine, that creates new demands on our transportation system, which is why we do this plan. Next slide, please. Here's kind of what that growth looks like, you know, Morpsy as the regional planning agency. We take a look at all of the local comprehensive plans in the region and kind of stitch those together and combine those to see, okay, what, what are our local, local communities planning for? And how does that translate into growth in the future based on, you know, the capacity and based on local land use policy? So, so this is what that looks like as far as households go. You know, the darker colors you'll see are the, the growth density. That's the growth expected between twenty twenty-one and twenty fifty of households per square mile basis. And then the total twenty fifty is that, that total, what that looks like is a total in twenty fifty. So you can see, I don't have any zoom in of Sunbury for this map specifically, but, you know, I know you are, you know, you're in a high-growth area. So I'm going to go to the next slide. There's a similar map that shows the job growth that's being forecasted twenty fifty. Again, you know, a lot of growth in that, you know, the center of the region in Franklin and Delaware counties. Again, you know, this is, this is why it's important to be planning for the future and looking out to twenty fifty. And, you know, we're, we're bringing seven hundred and twenty-six thousand more people to the region. How are they going to travel and get, and get around? Next slide, please. So the Metropolitan Transportation Plan identifies regional transportation priorities and strategies. It is long-range. We look at at least twenty-plus years. We update this document every four years and we submit this. It is a formal document. We submit it to ODOT and USDOT. And what's important about that is USDOT looks toward, looks to this plan as a regional consensus when it's looking at making federal investments. So in short, basically, any project that we anticipate utilizing federal funds for, it needs to be on this plan to be eligible for federal funding. Going to go to the next slide. And, and again, kind of just dragging home that, you know, we're growing. As we grow, our population is changing. We're getting older. We're getting younger. Preferences are changing. Development style is changing. And so the demands on our transportation and how we serve that growing population is, is going to change. And we need to continuously be looking at the future because transportation projects, you know, we know, we know, take a long time to, to fund and construct. So, and again, you know, this plan really guides the work of Morpsy as well as our regional and local partners in making decisions on transportation investments. And next slide, please. So a little bit about the plan, you know, we start with a set of six goals. This is really, I'm not going to read through all of these, but we, we want this plan and the projects identified in the plan to, they're all based on these six goals. So creating sustainable neighborhoods, positioning Central Ohio to, for economic prosperity, protecting natural resources, increasing regional collaboration and innovative solutions, providing transportation mobility and, and mobility options to benefit the health, safety and welfare of all people, and reducing per capita energy consumption. So everything, you know, as we move through the process of identifying these projects at all points, that's to, do these projects advance these six goals? Excellent. Just very quickly, the process, you know, again, we start with, I'm looking at identifying the goals and objectives, looking at local plans. So we pulled together all of the local planning activities that have been happening throughout the region, you know, identifying, you know, what have been the projects that have been identified already by local governments and already identified as priorities? We want to make sure we're considering those and including those in the process. And of course, data, you know, we're, we're forecasting population and employment, doing travel demand modeling. But what does that translate into demand for our freeways and roadway systems? And really crunching the numbers, you know, developing quantitative data analysis tools to kind of convert those goals into measurable evaluation criteria. And, and then ultimately, what the end product is that everyone's interested in is a set of regional strategies and regional projects that together as a region, we will work together to move forward and implement. So that's what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. And of course, with public participation throughout, hopefully you've been able to be engaged in some of that. Yeah, through our, our interactive web map and other public comment periods. Next one, please. So we, we have our draft strategies and draft list of projects available for public comments and review. So that's why I'm here today, just to let you know that it's, we're in a public comment period. We want your feedback. And so just to give you a little bit of background and so you can make some informed, give us informed information. So the draft strategies that are posted, there's quite a few, but they can be categorized into basically one of two categories. Are what we call our system management strategies. So these are strategies for how are we managing our existing transportation system? How are we preserving and maintaining it? How are we making it more efficient through intelligent transportation systems? How are we managing the demand? So, you know, managing the demand for single occupancy vehicle use. So, you know, seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand more people, we can have seven hundred and twenty-six thousand more cars. That's just, you know, it's not, it's not a good future. So how are we managing the demand for the, the roadway system? And then how are we making the existing system safer and secure? We're talking about growth. So inevitably, we will have to expand the transportation system to serve our community. So the other category of strategies are those transportation infrastructure projects. So we're looking at standalone bicycle and pedestrian projects. We're looking at transit projects, freight and intermodal connections, as well as roadways and freeways and some multimodal mobility hubs. And so I, the full list of strategies is available on our website. If, I can also share those via email or, you know, send hard copies if you're interested in taking a look. Next slide. So also available on our website is interactive web map that shows all of the projects that are being, that are currently being proposed to be included in the draft plan. This map is not meant to be read right now. It's just meant to show you just in order of magnitude of all the projects that are included in the region. It is a total of thirty-five billion dollars forecasted out to twenty fifty to be invested in our transportation system. You'll see a big chunk of that is transit. That includes maintaining and expanding existing transit services, both Delaware County Transit as well as Cota. And that does include, you might have heard of the code, that the code, about the code initiative. They're looking to expand and bring a new mode of transportation to the region, currently focused in the Franklin County area. The second biggest chunk of that pie is management and operations. So you can see, you know, a large portion of what we're expecting to spend in the future on transportation is really just maintaining our, our current system. And then other pieces of the pie represent different project types. You'll see freeways, interchanges, intersections, what we call major widening, which is adding the through lane, minor widening, which is really adding a center turn lane, and then standalone bike and pedestrian projects. What I do want to emphasize of any, any roadway projects that we have identified, we would assume that the appropriate bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure would be included as part of that project. So we don't, you, you won't see the green lines overlapping with the red, but we would assume that those facilities are included in, in the red lines too. I'm going to move to the next slide. This one that we're still looking at a regional level, these are the, the draft trains, they're proposed transit projects. Again, you know, mostly, we don't map the, the improvements we are, we would expect to see from on the fixed route bus system mainly because, you know, for both Cota and Delaware County Transit, those changes are happening relatively quickly. And, and then we're talking about looking at out to twenty fifty, you know, we just know we, we're going to, there's going to be a certain amount of investment in improving those lines. These are, what, what you see here mapped is what we call premium or high-capacity transit. So, you know, there are three, Cota has three train, rapid transit projects in design right now. Those are those three dark solid purple lines. There are two other corridors identified in the dark pink that are, I don't know if you're familiar with the Cmax line, which runs on Cleveland Avenue. So that's, it's a little bit more higher quality service than the typical bus service, but not quite, you know, a premium bus rapid transit. So those two pink lines are identified for kind of that middle, middle level of transit improvements. The larger corridor swath, so those are those purple, the larger purple swaths are corridors that we would expect to be able to be built by twenty fifty, high-capacity transit. We're actually showing two, expecting two of three of those to be built by twenty fifty. One being the connection from downtown to the airport, potentially eastern and further east. The two showing to the south, really there's got further studies needed. So for all three of those, while we think that it's feasible based on cost estimates and forecast revenue, revenue forecast, excuse me, that, but more study is needed. So they'd be, be able to be constructed, but the exact alignment and mode would need to be determined on a future study. The orange routes are just representative of, of the other transit studies that we have going on in the region currently. I'm sure you've heard about the passenger rail efforts that Morpsy is partnering with the State of Ohio, but those are still in study phases. And we don't expect that to be actually built by twenty fifty, but we wanted to recognize that the study is happening, there's investment and work being done to advance those projects. Similarly, you know, the, so that would represent the, the line going north into Delaware County as well as the line going to the northwest, you know, kind of Hilliard Dublin area. The other line, the other orange swath is a study being done by ODOT. They're looking at transit service, a survey of the growth that's happening on the eastern part of our region, connecting Newark and F and township in Licking County, as well as the New Albany area business park and the development that's happening there with the, you know, central Columbus area. So again, representing study that's, but not fiscally constrained by twenty fifty. Next slide, please. So here's kind of a zoom in of the Sunbury area of the projects that are currently being proposed in the, the city of Sunbury in, in surrounding areas. Again, you can visit our web map to kind of zoom around, zoom in, pan around, you can click on the individual projects to get more information. So you'll see, you know, the bypass that I believe was proposed in the comprehensive plan from twenty sixteen. You'll also see the Sunbury Parkway and the interchange, associated interchange improvements, which I know is, ODOT is currently, you know, in the middle of kind of reevaluating those. I guess this is a good opportunity to emphasize that these, all these projects are conceptual in nature. So while this is a fiscally constrained plan, it doesn't mean that all of the projects are actually have funding committed. It means that based on cost estimates and our funding forecast, you know, we think that these projects will be affordable based on what we expect to, the revenue to be available by twenty fifty. So while these are concept and they've been identified as priorities, we, it's, we still need to work with local communities, our partners in ODOTs and other planning organizations to actually get funding committed and move them forward. And so alignments can change, you know, as, as projects enter into, get funded and get enter, or enter into the project development. So just want to emphasize that. So again, yeah, we love your feedback. We just want to make sure that, you know, if there's anything you see that's concerning and maybe does not reflect a local priority or are we missing anything? You know, is there a project that's really important to the city that you don't see on here? And is there anything else that you think is important for us to know as we move forward in the process? Next slide, please. So just our timeline, we've been working on this since about two thousand and twenty-two. Last year, you know, we went through the whole process of evaluating all of the candidate projects that we had identified through local planning efforts as well as other analyses. And, you know, we just published a strat, list of strategies and projects early this year. And so going forward, we will be evaluating what are, what's the impact of those projects on air quality, on environment, on transportation disadvantaged populations. And we'll also be working on pulling together a full draft document. So you can, if you're interested, you can read all of the, all of the detail from the process and, and how the, the projects were identified. We are currently in a public comment period, as I mentioned, and we do hope to adopt this plan by, have the Morpsy boarded off this plan in May of this year. Next. And we can actually skip this one. I've mentioned some of the activity at both link us if you're interested, you know, we can reach out. And so what's next? Again, we, we're out speaking to all of the, as many communities as we can in this public comment timeframe in our NPO area. So we have fifty-four presentations scheduled, really wanting to just, yeah, again, open it up for feedback, let you know the opportunity is there. We do have, we are hosting an open house at Morpsy on March nineteenth from three thirty to six thirty. I would love to see you there. We'll have, you know, a bunch of maps and available to look at, staff available for questions. So all are invited. And then we'll incorporate all the feedback we receive through this public comment period through the end of March. So we have until March twenty-ninth to submit comments. And then again, we will incorporate that to the, the final plan to be adopted in May of two thousand and twenty-four this year. And I think the next slide has just my information as well as our team, you know, we've got fifty-four presentations. There's a, there's a team of us out presenting. So if you need to get ahold of me or anyone else at Morpsy, we can, we can help you out. So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it and I look forward to hearing from you.
Right. Do we have time for any questions in case council would like to ask? Sure. Okay. Any, any questions or comments from council?
I'm just curious about the March nineteenth date. It's a bit of a challenge being election day.
Yes.
A lot of community-minded people are going to be tied up that day. Be hard to get people there, I would think.
Yeah, that, that wasn't brought to our attention, unfortunately. We've, we've got it planned that day.
That it scared them.
Yes, hoping that, you know, people can do their civic duty and also, you know, comment on transportation projects as well while they're at it. So, yeah, we, we do recognize that. And unfortunately, we don't feel like we can change it at this point because it can have been, been communicated.
I do want to call off the website where I believe the majority, all of this information is going to be available. That's morpsy.org backslash M T P twenty fifty.
Exactly. And there's, just to clarify, so, well, we updated this, we update this plan every four years. So we have a currently adopted plan that we're working, like, working from. So that's the twenty twenty plan. And then there's another button for the twenty twenty-four plan. So you want to make sure to click on the twenty twenty-four to twenty fifty plans. And that will take you to the web map that you can actually click on individual projects and leave a comment on individual projects. It's kind of like a public forum. So you can see what, what other comments have been submitted on a certain project. Or if you don't want to comment publicly, you can certainly send an email or, or in writing via mail as well.
Thank you. I did want to mention one thing. There was an exhibit on there that showed a zoom in on Sunbury. Just, again, these are very forward-looking initiatives. They happen once every four years. We're talking about planning for like a massive influx of people, not just in our area, but, you know, thirteen counties, I forget how many jurisdictions you actually represent. It's, I mean, it's eighty.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, right? You're planning for a very broad area. There's partnerships with ODOT and the state and Department of Development and local municipalities and townships. And what I want to say is they've incorporated, our goal, our goal is to preserve the town square and we work out from that. We know there is going to be transportation demands moving from east to west. We live on a US highway. We live on three or four state highways. We have an interstate that runs through Sunbury. So we want to move people safely and effectively. And in order to do that, we have to move people and semis and others, not through the downtown port. This is, this is just one hole in the bucket, but it's not a very efficient hole when you're making the ninety-degree turn right out here. So we've got to find ways to move people around the city. These are lines on a page that can be moved. But the, the project in getting our hat in the ring for funding is very important. And I think that's the message you're trying, trying to share with us today.
Exactly.
Any comments or questions? Thank you so much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, next we have B S T N G Chief Kovach.
Right. Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm Mr. Council. Good to see you tonight.
Good to see you.
Let's talk about the thing nobody's talking about, growth. So a couple of changes for twenty twenty-four moving forward. I have to talk to Murray and the mayor is, somebody from the fire department will be at the plan. Is they have somebody here at the second meeting every month. So it won't be me all the time. I'm going to get some of my younger lieutenants involved in the process. They need to start getting out there and experiencing some of these things because I do hope one day to retire. So we'll start getting them some experience. So somebody will be here at the second meeting every month. Just ask, answer any questions you guys have. Our, my monthly chief reporter will start being in your council back if that need. I, you guys can all read. I don't see the need to really go over that unless you have questions. If you do have questions, you can wait till we come to the meeting or feel free to call me, email me. We're always available to answer any questions. So I think the big thing that everybody's wanting maybe a little bit more information on is we do have a bond issue on the ballot. I will carefully try to answer any questions you may have about that if there aren't. So that's really, I think, the, the reason I'm here tonight is to see if anybody had any questions about that that we can answer and, and be brief and quick and respect your time.
I'm going to be a little layup here, just so everybody knows what we're talking about. There's a bond issue on the ballot. That's this March nineteenth, right?
Correct.
Okay. This is my summary and my summary only, and I do not speak on behalf of the fire department. But we are in a growing community. There's been one fire house located in Sunbury. You got to think the, the geographic area is really from the far western boundary of Sunbury to the far eastern boundary of Delaware County and the two townships, Trenton and Berkshire, as well as Delena and Sunbury. It's great that we have a centrally located hub here, but your second highest demand on fire service today is in and around the freeway. And so there has been an agreement reached, I think, with the developer to potentially grant land, three acres.
Correct. Nationwide, we were able to reach an agreement. Then they donated three acres.
It's close to Wilson Road.
Just north of Camping World on Wilson Road.
Exactly, which is prime real estate, by the way. I mean, thank goodness, that was the Wyler family. And I think nationwide, if I'm not mistaken, who donated that land. And it's opening up a possibility to open up a second station. And it's actually going to be, if passed, a joint station with the county. So there's going to be an EMS co-located with the fire department. And is there any sheriff's presence?
No sheriff's presence now. We, Delaware County, when we first started talking about this years ago, recognized the need very well and already has that second medical unit in, in place. They're over here.
Right.
So the goal is to take medical eleven over to Berkshire Township with us.
Right. And so this is where I may get a little bit out of my lane, but this is what I understand. There, there is a cost estimate to build a station. There's a bond on the ballot that actually is for a little bit more than would cover the cost for station number two headquarters and then the new station. And potentially, if it passes, it actually frees up some capital to maybe build a third, potentially, I mean, on the eastern side of your district, potentially.
Potentially.
So, and if you don't, that money is returned to the taxpayers.
It is. So the, the bond is for point zero point seven eight mils. It's a fifteen-year bond. We should generate nine million dollars. We do have an architect on board. We're working for preliminary design now, so we don't have hard costs for that second station. We do have an idea. But the goal with that money and the reason we went with the nine million dollar amount isn't that we're going to spend nine million dollars. That's not the goal. The goal is to have to only come to you guys once. Everybody's, we know everybody's taxes are going to go up. Valuations just went up. We really don't want to have to burden the taxpayers any more than we have to. Let's go now. We know the growth is inevitable. It's already here. So that'll secure the money to, number one, fill the second station. And then the next thing we need to do very quickly is secure land for the third. Land is not getting any cheaper. We need to find that, secure that now. That will cover that as well, the construction of that station and then possibly renovating the current facility. The current facility is built in eighty-four. It's starting to show some age. Typically, you design these buildings for a fifty-year lifespan before they would need major modifications. We're, we're closing in on that, that current station, the way it is. And the location's not turning out to be too fantastic anymore either. So as we move forward, we're really going to have to evaluate where the fire district is going to go, where's the best place for us? where the fire district's going to go. Where's the best place for us? We're going to have to tweak things as we move along. So that's the, that's the basis of the, the bond. You are correct. Where it gets a little confusing is we can draw this money out in increments. So just because it says nine million dollars doesn't mean we automatically get a piggy bank with nine million dollars in it. We have to tell the auditor, hey, this station's going to be four million dollars. We're going to make a four million dollar draw. That's what your tax bill is reflected. So they evaluate, the auditor's office evaluates that every year. And when they send your tax bills out, they're only going to send you what we've drawn. So it's not a blank checkbook and I wanted to make sure that that's clear to everybody. Now, we, the fire district has historically been very good with our money. Um, making sure that we're responsible and it'll continue to be that way.
Good to, thank you. Any questions for chief? Comments?
Yeah. I appreciate it. We'll keep putting things out on social media. Um, little one pagers on social media are typically directed over to our website for more information. If you have questions, please call us. We want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible. Um, we're an open book. Every stat we have is, everything's on our website. So there's, there's nothing fancy about us. It's all out there. But if there's any questions, please absolutely call me, reach out to me and make this uh, the best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for making a commitment to continuing, because you said transparency, so I
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. We have a short meeting.
Well, we're here on to uh, the visitor section. Uh, are there any unscheduled visitors that would like to speak with city council? All right. We're on to committee reports. Mr. Grumley.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. We had a fantastic uh, finance meeting this, earlier this evening. Um, and we had uh, some good information on many topics. Uh, Ms. Stefan informed us on several things as, as well as Mr. Hennessy. Um, we had discussions uh, last month and continued this month about some zoning software um, and a couple vendors. And I believe that we are leaning towards a particular vendor and that'll be on next month's uh, council agenda uh, to discuss if there's any further discussion and, and take action uh, at that point, because the sooner we take action, the uh, the quicker that the, the city and staff can uh, be more efficient with some of those uh, zoning processes. So uh, and then we also had a, a follow up on our asset management initiative um, and, and appraisal. And that has been completed and I believe we're looking at a report um, sometime in March uh, with the final results of that um, of that appraisal of the city's assets. Um, also, uh, we've been talking for several months about the credit card policy and who's going to be responsible a, as far as a compliance officer. And the mayor um, has chosen uh, with the recommendation by Ms. Stefan, um, Jess, Jess Hendricks, our finance clerk will actually be um, responsible for those credit cards. She meets the requirements under the policy and just makes uh, seems to be a very logical choice. So um, she'll be taking on that responsibility. Um, Montrose, a company we've been working with, um, looking to renew their contract for our economic development that we've been using them for, uh, but also looking at an additional service um, as far as advocacy services at the um, state level when it comes to funding. Uh, and uh, looking uh, for lobbying services uh, to make sure Sunbury, Sunbury is well represented and represented uh, when it comes to uh, funding dollars that are available for our initiatives. Um, and then hydraulic capacity study. This is a little above my pay grade, but this is uh, talking about um, the use of water for our light industrial support and making sure that we have the flow of water needed to uh, support that development. And then we had a, a review of some of the year to date comparison reports of finance and uh, reconciliation and, and bank information from the step. And so I think that covered everything we, we talked about. So.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Grumley. Mr. Capel?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Mrs. Cooper?
Yes, we had an events and commemoration meeting on February fifteenth. And just speaking of the fire department, they, they were here. We had a presence of the fire department and the PD was here and our representation from the chamber was there, all out here. And they really do often come and it's really appreciated because we can sometimes get real time feedback on things. So I thank them. Uh, we talked about Eagle Adventure Camp. They'll be coming back um, to GRE. Uh, that will go through our parks committee to, from our matrix. Uh, we discussed our citizens recognition program. We had a nomination this time, so we're excited about that. Our staff will be reaching out to that person and hopefully we'll have them in March. Um, we discussed our Fourth of July working group. Ms. Swain gave us an update on that. And we discussed our solar eclipse that's coming, or not our, but solar eclipse that's coming on April eighth and what the city wants to do with that. I think more information is still coming, but uh, they want to do something at Freedom Park, something um, sort of low key and family friendly. And they're looking to get um, some churches, the library, other uh, Sunbury folks involved with that. So I know it's, and they are looking for, if anybody is looking to volun, would like to volunteer to help with parking. Uh, the staff is looking for that. So if you know of anybody that would be interested in that, it's April eighth. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Martin? All right, Mr. Neff?
Nothing.
All right, we do have a planning and zoning commission meeting uh, this upcoming Monday. And that's the only update I have there. All right, we are on to the police report. Deputy Chief Wade?
Yeah, so um, we had the opportunity to meet with CT consultants and integrate some of the, some work with the GIS mapping. Um, we're looking to develop an app so where we can utilize some of our traffic mitigation, like the radar signs and some of that stuff and map it around the city. Um, that's a working group. We were able to give them quite a bit of data here recently, just on recent deployments of the signs so that we can try to get, um, and where the signs are posted, posted speed limits and then what the average speeds are because, you know, as the mayor alluded to, um, the self-checkout is an issue for progress. The uh, speed and uh, stuff sometimes is, is an issue or something we hear frequently. So we're trying to find a way to become more public with that and get that information out. So uh, the public's informed uh, as to what's really going on. Um, construction with the PD continues. Uh, we'll miss out on the gas leak. We'll throw it. Um, well, a few of their updates. Um, we've had five of the council members stop through the, and toward the, the PD. Um, obviously, we're excited to show them that and uh, the development continues. Um, I had a chance to, there's a mayor's report and sent in through a mayor's report uh, session here recently. Um, a shout out to them. On a big work with the lab program, which is working to get people that are um, without a license, suspended for whatever reason, um, without a license registration, expired. Working to get people valid uh, with insurance and developing rubber's license and doing exceptional uh, work with that. Um, the Tigers Club stopped in and dropped off some drinks and snacks for the officers. That was a good visit with them. And um, Detective Smith visited with the Girl Scouts and did a internet safety uh, presentation with those folks. Morgan Lawbacher is one of our officers. He's uh, been working with this traffic uh, study uh, research. He's also challenged himself to try out for the tactical team. So he'll be doing that here at the beginning of March. Uh, try to represent Sunbury, uh, Sunbury Police Department on our mutual way, uh, mutual uh, tactical team.
Any questions? I'm, I'm not asking permission. I'm just going to tell you. I just want to say thank you um, for involving me in uh, the pre SWAT planning, um, the pre-tactical deployment. Uh, thank you for including me and uh, just the preparation that that unit does and the cross department coordination with EMS and fire, local police, schools. Um, it's unbelievable. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you, chief, uh, for getting me involved in that. I was the only elected official there, that is for sure. And um, so impressed with your team and with the, the broader response. When folks say like, you know, hey, you know, we had things happen here. Yeah, but these folks are doing an amazing job. I mean, like thirty second responses, one minute responses on, on major events. It's, it's amazing. So thank you.
Thank you, chief.
It's something that's um, overlooked and uh, thanks for being part of that. Seeing you excited that gives you comfort, understanding the preparation that goes into it.
Definitely. Thank you. Any questions for the police?
All right. Let's rock and roll to the administrative report.
All right, I just was going to highlight two items from my report. Um, one, I want to talk about the Sunbury Parkway District Plan. Uh, where we are with that. Uh, I have mentioned that um, we did put that, uh, the, the draft final plan out for public review. Uh, we did that in the month of January. We just wanted to indicate, we got about thirty comments back uh, from residents, stakeholders, what have you. We're sorting through those right now. Uh, I expect to have uh, a response back to our consultant. Hopefully they will turn that document around. We'll get it back somewhere in the early March timeframe and be back in front of council uh, for a presentation in uh, in late March. So look for that to come soon. And uh, the only other item I was going to point out then as well is uh, snow and ice. We'd had our biggest uh, snow event of the year last Friday, right? So uh, I, I think the team did a, a fine job. Again, as I've indicated, we've got a relatively junior team. So this is the biggest snow that they've uh, dealt with. Um, I think they did a good job. If you had comments that suggest that uh, there are opportunities for improvement, please let me know that. I'll be sure to pass that on to the, to the service director. So.
They did an excellent job.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We're on to the engineers report. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mayor. At first I wanted to say it was really, really nice to see Maria today. She's uh, worked with her quite a bit in the uh, past with Morpsy and she's a great resource and highly encouraged we continue to coordinate, cooperate with her. I'm very excited to see her tonight. Um, secondly, I'm going to bore you differently tonight. Focus, I'm not going to focus on some of the things that I've told you about and told you about, but I wanted to highlight a few different things. Um, just a few items. Number one, we spent a good bit of time with uh, stormwater erosion control. Uh, trying to put together some guidance, some legislation, some regulations that uh, put a little teeth in what we do. Focus on the big picture with the construction, infrastructure work, but also on individual lot. Uh, issues that are occurring on a regular basis, particularly on more so on some subdivisions and others. But we're also coordinating with the Soil and Water Conservation District. They're being quite helpful. They've got a lot of experience, obviously. Um, through Delaware County and through their, and just through their years of experience and all this kind of stuff. It's what they do. And in fact, I, Daryl and I and uh, Alyssa and Alex and Amber. I think that was all of us. Met with them uh, last week. And I had a good meeting with them and we're meeting with them too on Friday to, at Price Ponds to kind of go over uh, potential to have them assist us with some individual lot uh, issues and potentially in the future, do some inspections for us as permits are pulled and before they're finalized. So I'll, I'll keep you up to date on that, but it's pretty exciting and I'm, I'm uh, encouraged that we'll have some, some better uh, teeth, as I said, on that to be able to to get some better quality um, erosion control measures in place and best management practices and some way to implement that in the future.
So I just wanted to Dan, can I jump in just a little bit on that? Just add to that. So um, I know we've talked about this with the service uh, committee uh, several times, but at this point, I think what's different is we actually do have some legislation. We are trying to scrub that legislation uh, to um, to do what, what Dan had indicated. I mean, obviously, we've got some internal reviews we'll need to do on that as well, but um, really do feel like we're working toward having a, a proposal back in front of council. Yeah, that will again add the teeth to our ordinances that we haven't had. So thanks, Dan, for getting the, at least the initial draft started.
You're welcome. Thank you. That's been a, been a team effort. And then on, on GIS, we've been, we've done quite a bit with that. As uh, Deputy Chief Wade had mentioned, we um, had, had been working with the police department on uh, some of the signage and some data uh, related to that. Um, working on that was, that was interesting. There's a lot we can do with that in the future and interested in doing that. We've also worked a good bit with uh, Service Supervisor Stockmaster on uh, some of the infrastructure for storm and sanitary sewer. And while that's been very good to do, and that's something we need to do more of, it's also revealed some of the gaps we have in the data and some of the uh, some inaccuracies in it that, that has always been there, honestly, since I was village engineer eons ago. And uh, it's revealed that in, the, the lack of accuracy in that information that we don't need to enhance and we're, we're putting together some strategies to do that in a cost effective way. Um, in fact, um, I think we're going to have, well, I'll, I'll talk to you more about Daryl. We'll put together some strategies to do that in a way that's not expensive that we can do uh, in a little bit of a creative way to get that enhanced and get some better information together so that you can have that for your asset management and then just for general information when we need for any, any different endeavors that we, that we take on. Um, also Alex uses it quite a bit for different information, for different uh, things that he's doing and um, that, so we're, we're really starting to get more and more into GIS and uh, and starting to, to, to do that and looking forward to continuing to do that. As we do that, it reveals that what information we need to continue to gather and put together a, a higher level uh, data set. Um, so we'll track those inaccuracies, the areas where we need to have better information. We'll keep that log. We'll get together with staff and track that so that we can, you know, continue to have a more robust GIS system. And then uh, that's the fun stuff. The other two things is we had the uh, pre-con for the apartments last week. They'll be breaking ground here shortly. Uh, not exactly sure what the schedule is, but you know, as the weather's breaking, so will the ground. Uh, and we have the pre-con for the bank project on Friday. So they'll be breaking ground soon as well. Uh, with that, I think there's a lot of other information in my report. Happy to answer any questions on that, if you've got any.
Any questions? Can I ask for you to add one item on here just so we don't lose track of it?
Sure.
Thoroughfare planning. I know it overlaps many of your pro, projects and programs here, but uh, I, we have a need to update our master thoroughfare plans, including trails. And um, it made me think about it when Morpsy's doing theirs. It, we should align with what they're doing.
Absolutely.
And ours is much more granular than what they're looking at.
Absolutely. And I can, we do have one put together. I'll show you that tomorrow on our traffic group committee meeting.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
I appreciate it. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. White. You're welcome. Great update. All right, we are on to resolutions. We have zero ordinances. Third reading ordinance number twenty twenty four dot zero four and ordinance accepting a petition for annexation of territory consisting of four hundred and ninety-eight point one six seven plus or minus acres of land located in Trenton Township, Delaware County and owned by AEP Ohio Transmission Company, Inc., David B. Cockrell and Curtis J. Cockrell and Sunbury Thirty Seven LLC and declaring an emergency. I believe we're looking for a motion on the emergency. I'll make the motion on the emergency.
Second?
Second by Mr. Grumley. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Grumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Six yeas?
All right, we're uh, I'm going to make a motion on ordinance number twenty twenty four dot zero four.
Second?
We got a second by Mr. Grumley. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Grumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Yeas?
All right, we have ordinance number twenty twenty four dot zero five. This is the third reading and ordinance accepting a petition for annexation of territory consisting of three hundred and seventy-eight point five nine five plus or minus acres of land located in Berkshire and Trenton Townships, Delaware County and owned by Columbus Southern Power Company, Glenn F. Hale, trustee and FinCon Vance Valley Limited, and declaring an emergency. I'll make a motion on the emergency.
Second?
Second by Mr. Grumley. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Grumley?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Six yeas?
Make a motion on ordinance number twenty twenty four dot zero five.
Second?
Second by Mr. Grumley. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Grumley?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Yeas, must have passed.
All right, thank you. All right, we are on the second readings. Ordinance number twenty twenty four dot zero six and ordinance consenting All right, we are on the second readings, ordinance number twenty-two-four dot zero six, and ordinance consenting. To spot paving repairs along I seventy-one within the city of Sunberry. Thank you. You may recall, I wanted to pass this last time, and we've just, we're reading it again because you've asked me to read it again.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Um, ordinance twenty-two-four dot oh six. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, motion for suspension.
All right, Mrs. Cooper would like to request a suspension of the rules.
Second?
Mr. Neff would like to second that motion. Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Grumley?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Six yeas?
Motion on the emergency now?
I don't think we need an emergency.
Cause it's an ordinance, okay. Okay. Motion on the ordinance twenty-two-four dot oh six.
All right, we got a motion by Councilwoman Cooper.
Thank you.
We got a second by Mr. Neff. Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Grumley?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Yeas, motion passes.
All right, we're on to first reading ordinance number twenty-two-four dot oh seven, and ordinance approving the application of Brian Besseker. Is that right? Am I doing okay on that? PS to rezone approximately point eight zero one plus or minus acres of property known as four fifty South Miller Drive. From planned residence district to planned commercial district pursuant to the city of Sunberry zoning code, declaring an emergency. And.
Motion to suspend the rule.
All right, there we go. Motion to suspend the rules. We're coming out with a clean agenda next week, folks. Um, we got a second by Mr. Capel. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Grumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Motion on the emergency.
A motion on the emergency, Mr. Martin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Capel. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Grumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Six yeas?
Motion on ordinance number twenty-two-four dot zero seven.
A motion by Mr. Martin.
Second.
By Mr. Capel. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Grumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Six yeas?
Passing new and unfinished business. We have the Montrose Contract renewal, which is covered in the Finance Committee meeting. Economic Development and Advocacy Services. Uh, any additional discussion before motion, please? Make a motion?
Second?
Second by Mr. Grumley. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Grumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Six yeas?
Got the hydrologic capacity study, CT Consultants Task Order. Did you make a motion, Mr. Neff?
Yes.
We got a motion by Mr. Neff for an approval of a hydrologic capacity study, CT Consultants Task Order. Second. Second by Mr. Capel. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Grumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Six yeas?
All right, we're on to new and unfinished business. Mr. Neff?
Welcome to your first.
All right, Mr. Mark?
Just a reminder that early voting started today and the election is March nineteenth. And technically, early voting is called in-person absentee voting because. Election Day is voting day, and so that's why they call it in-person absentee voting. But you, you, there, the first three weeks, it's eight to five Monday through Friday. The last week of it, they will also be open on Saturday. And Sunday that week to give people that can't get in there on the weekend, can't get in during the week. To come in and vote on, on the weekend, so. It's, yeah. It started.
Thank you for working that, too. I always think about you this time, these times of years.
Yeah.
Multiple times every year.
Yeah.
Mrs. Cooper?
Just a reminder that the, the Rotary Club is bringing the Harlem Wizards to town on March fourth. And they're doing something kind of cool. We haven't announced it on Facebook, but since it's just friends among us here, I thought I'd let you guys know that. Um, there, the Rotary Club has partnered with the Ally Anderson Foundation. And we will be having a, a raffle. Uh, historically, they have done like a fifty-fifty of sorts, um, and they will be doing something similar. Um, not quite a fifty-fifty, but they'll be taking donations for the Ally Anderson Foundation. And after the game, the Rotary Club will be making a sizable donation to the Ally Anderson Foundation. Uh, we were blessed to have a, a friend of hers. Grace came and spoke to the Rotary Club. Um, and it was just incredible to see the strength that she had as a teenager to, to share about her friend. And shared a video and talked about Ally, and we're happy to partner for her foundation. So it's kind of cool.
That is great.
So I'll see you there in stripes.
I will be there. I won't be arrested. I will be a referee.
Will we clarify that?
Mr. Capel?
Can do both.
Um, I wanted to thank Mr. Hennessy and Chief for tours of municipal building in the police station. Took, uh, John and Molly and myself through last week, right? Very, during the snowstorm, that's right, that's right. Very impressive. Love to see what's happening there. Yeah, it was right as the snowstorm hit.
Never did.
Yes.
Yep.
That's great. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that as well. Thank you for your time, Daryl. Thank you for your time. It was here in a snowstorm, but, uh. I thought the highlight was the fact you're gonna have male and female locker rooms, so I, I said at the time, glad to see we made it to the eighties. But, uh. But very exciting to have the new facilities, and I think, um, you know, with the fire department presentation, it's, it, you know, Sunberry's looking to future growth. And the needs of the services department, our public servants, and, uh, I think it's great timing, forward-thinking, so I'm so happy for the police department. We'll be happy for the fire department when that levy passes as well. I bought that, so, great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
The only new business I had was, um. The, a key topic for, uh, the state of the city and a goal for the city. Is, um, doing due diligence on forming a joint recreation district. I did want you to know that since this state of the city, I, I haven't been dormant. I have been active, uh, working with other jurisdictions and trying to lay out a very diligent process. And who do we bring along in terms of resources? How do those resources get funded? And so we can lay out a, a very clear process as, um, you know, we start to really engage the public and get their feedbacks. But, um, you know, we have it in close connection with the schools. We have been talking to Berkshire Township.